Isn't that interesting that we're losing the Aziz as well? I think I figured out, I mean, I, yeah, yeah. He's on the wrong side of history. But, but, no, it's, it's both mayors.
Yeah.
Wow. Super. Fruit basket upset.
Right?
Yeah.
I remember thinking about Lebanon, I mean, I swear to God, that's where. I'll be seeing your mayor.
It's sort of a gray tsunami kind of thing.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever so good.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please? Mics are very sensitive tonight, thank you.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski. Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Olson. Counselor Novak.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Thank, here. Business from the public, persons wanting to provide comments may submit written comments and/or register to speak at the website provided in the agenda before noon on the day of the meeting or appear in person at the me, at the meeting and register to speak using the signup sheet. Do we have anyone signed up? Thank you. Does anybody in the meeting would like to speak to the council today? Hey, Chief. Thank you. Adoption of the consent calendar, removal of Public Safety Commission, page two, removing Lloyd Henyon from the Public Safety Commission. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, Counselor, Counselor Johnson was first.
Okay. Um, I didn't realize we were there already. I want to talk about, um, A, and I just wondered if, um, if the committee has requested this or if the appointee, and then also, how are we on other committees? Is this, is this an issue now or, uh, because Mr. Henyon is usually pretty, uh, responsible. And so I'm really, was wondering, you know, if something, I mean, I heard, in fact, I heard today that he's doing okay, but maybe he just doesn't, I mean, Dick, is that your, your appointment?
My appointment.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, please.
Okay, go ahead.
He's your appointee.
Um, yeah, I'll go with B and C late, after, okay.
Uh, Lloyd is my appointment, he's also a good friend of mine. And I need to turn on, I guess. And, um, he has missed several meetings. And Lloyd's an interesting guy. And he has been working hard to get his, um, he has some martial arts friends. And he's been working hard and has been successful to, uh, get them a regular driver's license where they don't have to apply every year. They can be like we are, where you get a driver's license and it lasts for a while. And he's also working on getting them and martial arts people in Oklahoma, there's a lot of them there, uh, some decent healthcare. And he's also trying to establish a United Islands in the Pacific kind of coalition. And as you might guess, when you start trying to herd cats, you get complaints from here, there, and the other place. So he's been, uh, in Salem a lot doing, uh, uh, that kind of stuff. And on top of that, he's, um, oh, one of his cousins who we really like, Jerry Sheffield, you might remember him? He came and he, uh, gave us a lot of advice on lighting for the Dave Clark Pass. And then when it came time to, uh, give the contract, uh, we turned Jerry Sheffield down, which, uh, was disappointing to me. Yeah, but Jerry has recently died and Lloyd has, uh, has spent some time there. He's got a brother who's dying of, uh, cancer, who has a variety of other, uh, financial and property problems. Uh, so he's been a busy guy. And, um, oh, and his wife, who's a nurse, she works in Salem. And she's one of the nurses that's on this double shift, 16 hours a day kind of thing. So she's not around to help him very much. Uh, but I called him up and I said, Lloyd, if, um, hey, if, uh, would you mind if we took you off the, uh, uh, Public Safety Commission? Oh, Public Safety, he's, uh, he was the, uh, uh, for ODOT, he was their, uh, chief economist. He knows a lot about, uh, traffic and safety and that kind of stuff. Well, he said, yeah, that'd be okay if you're really desperate. Well, he didn't even say that, he just said it'd be okay. So I'd like to ask the manager, are you really desperate to have a full group of people on the committee or are you not able to have meetings because, uh, too many people are absent? What is the problem?
Thanks, Counsel Olson. You know, um, I wouldn't use the word desperate, but it is, the council has recognized the importance of, uh, commission members being involved and making up, you know, following through on their commitment. So Mr. Henyon has, has got some, you know, pretty, as you pointed out, some pretty, uh, big demands currently in his life. So of the four meetings in 2019, he attended one in February. Of the four meetings in 2020, he didn't attend any. Of the five meetings in 2021, he didn't attend any.
Okay.
And then in October of '21, we talked to, tried to talk to him about, uh, the need to show up and, and be involved. But he has not attended any of the three meetings since he was approached about the issue. So he basically hasn't attended a meeting since February of 2019.
Okay.
And I, I have tried to call and talk to him, but his mailbox is full. And I, I, I appreciate the fact that it's, uh, you know, he's got a lot of demands on his life right now, and it sure seems to me that it's probably something that he would, he might even appreciate if we, um, find somebody.
Yeah, okay.
Make those commitments.
Well, maybe somebody can appoint him in the future when things tone down. So, uh, is now a good time to appoint somebody else?
I would, uh, recommend that we talk to Kinsey, who manages the process. Um, there, there, there is an application process, and I would say, if you have somebody that has made an application.
I have.
We do.
An application, yes.
Okay. Um, well, then I would.
Uh, how many applications do, do we have?
She's not here right now.
Oh, nobody here.
There's no rush to do.
Is she online someplace?
No, she's not.
No. But I don't believe there's a rush to do this.
We do it next meeting.
Well, I thought maybe we had a meeting that was imminent where you had to have people.
No, 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 we just had one, actually. So, um, we can come back on August 10th, uh, and, and we'll talk to you, Counsel Olson, in the meantime, and get your appointment and, um, and then we'll get back to you on the 10th.
Uh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Novak.
Oh, thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm fairly certain that anyone who knows Lloyd Henyon loves him. I consider him a personal friend as well.
Yeah, sweet guy besides.
Yeah, and I was very surprised to learn about absenteeism with regard to him, just like anyone else would be, knowing him. Um, but I do want to say, for all the talk about how difficult it is to get people to sign up to serve, we do have an application on file right now from our ward. And I don't, I mean, it's, I don't know why we wouldn't just fill the vacancy, if you want to wait till August 10th.
Well, the process, the process is that it comes in our packet, and we review the packet, because we vote on that person. And so we haven't seen the application, so then on the 10th, we'll have an opportunity to see.
Okay.
And I'd like to, um, ask about item D also, if we're done with A.
Okay, so who, who's going to speak to item D? The accepting right of way from Greater Albany Public, but Greater Albany Public Schools?
Director Bailey's approaching the desk there, Mayor.
So do I understand the agenda correctly that the school district wants to give us that piece of property?
That's right, that's.
Microphone, microphone.
You need to turn on somehow.
I'm tentative. I was warned, it's very sensitive. Um, yes, so the school district wants to, is going to dedicate that for additional right of way along, along East Thornton Lake Road, which is quite narrow right now.
So is it presently paved?
I, oh, let me see. Oh my gosh. Um, I don't, I think that this is, was not formally right of way, so, oh, Ron's on here. I, I think it's part of the landscaping area adjacent to the gaps property there, but Ron Irish just popped up, so he might know more.
Go ahead, Ron.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. So the, the school district went through a land use application, a conditional use application, to add classrooms to the school. And one of the sections of the development code says that when you do a land use application, a piece of property, you have to either improve all of your frontages to city standards, or the city engineer can determine that it's not a good time, it's not timely to build the improvement, the city can accept a petition and waiver. In this case, the school has frontage on East Thornton Lake, it's currently opens traffic, it's paved, but it's not built to city standards, and the right of way isn't wide enough to meet city standards. And so the condition that was applied to their land use action was to provide a petition and waiver for the street improvement, so that's essentially deferred. Uh, but to dedicate their share of the remaining right of way so that the right of way is there. And that's, that's why you see the dedication tonight, they're complying with that land use decision.
So I guess my question then is, um, who gets to pay for paving it?
At the moment, it's not, there's no plan to improve it. We didn't condition the school district to build their frontage, curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the length of their frontage, partially because they were just adding a few classrooms in the back. So the, the improvement they were making to the school seemed minor in relation to the, the magnitude of the street improvement. So the question about how the street improvement would be ultimately paid for is a good one. Um, it, it's either going to remain the way it is now, in its current state, essentially a county standard road. Or the other option is that it's improved at some point through an LID, and council would have to choose to do that.
So would the school then pay for it if it was an LID?
If the council decided to form an assessment district, an LID, you would have the ability to decide which properties were benefited, and you would have the ability to assign cost. So you would be able to assess the school district.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll be gone by that time, uh, but I'm, uh, wondering if, uh, the school says, here's a street that needs paving, we'll give it to you so you can pave it for us. And I think I'd object to that.
We, we don't have an obligation to improve the street. The, the obligation for the improvement still falls to the school district through that petition and waiver, we have just deferred it with the land use decision.
The other thing I'll add is that, um, if I'm not mistaken, East Thornton Lake Road was improved, meaning it was paved, um, fairly recently, I think when North Albany Road was done through an agreement with Benton County, as part of the, um, way for us to take that road, we required them to improve it. So it wasn't built to city standards, but it was repaved recently, so it's not in terrible shape.
So if I understand, uh, Irish correctly, um, we accept it, we're going to have to probably improve, pave it.
Well, there, Ron's better at this than I am, but there's no impetus to build that road to a city standard right now. There's no development that's happening that's going to add significant volumes to that road. So it's fine staying the way it is, but the dedication of right of way means that if we do need to build it to city standards, now we have right of way to do that through this section. But there's no plan to do that at this, at this point.
Uh, buses don't use it.
The buses go up there.
On that road?
Yes.
Well, I guess when they get it broken up, then we'll talk about it again. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Okay, yes, thank you. I was gonna say, we have friends that live down that road and we go there, it's, it's fine. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a speedway or anything, but it's just, it's a good road. Uh, my, I think this is on B, because I went to the, uh, page, but on the June, the minutes for June 22nd.
Yes.
On page, let me see, page 11, I want to say that, um, it should be changed from, business from the city manager from Johnson presented to Johnson to presented. You presented it and I, I didn't.
Oh, really?
I wanted you to get the credit for that and not me. Okay. And then the other thing is on, uh, C, no, C. And this will probably, Stacy, you'll have to answer it. No, I just saw that there's a, a planning, uh, application for the corner of Gary and Queen, just going to be 107, um, housing units built on that. And so I was wondering, Stacy, uh, since with the grant, I mean, I don't, I'm, I don't want to say no, we don't want to get a grant, but I just wondered, when that happens, so that part that they're going to have, that long field, would we want to go ahead and do the sidewalks, you know, with the grant here, or do we let the developer do it? I, I wasn't sure.
Um, it probably just depends on the timing. Um, if we're successful, successful and receive the grant, there's, there's time that's going to be taken up during design, and so if the development needs to happen before we're ready to construct the project, then the development would end up paying for the sidewalk.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, you know, uh, accept the grant, yeah, but if we don't have to use it all, that'd be great, and if they're gonna, they're gonna probably need it to what their, uh, design is. And so, I mean, I was quite surprised to see that, and I'm thinking, well, at least it'll be mowed down. But there's also going to be 107 houses in there. Like, thank you for Ward Three. We're going to add a lot of people, so, anyway, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't double doing. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I'd move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I need a second, I'm sorry.
As adjusted.
As adjusted, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
So, four to one? Motion passes. Number five on the agenda is staff reports, AMC amendments to address portable toilets. Director Chris Bailey, you're on the packet, it's 21 through 25. And the number one item on that is creative, create an Albany Municipal Code, section seven dot eight four dash zero nine five, portable toilets, and amend Albany Municipal Code, sections nine dot oh four dot zero three zero, portable toilets.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we discussed this at the work session on Monday, there's just a couple of things that I'll add additionally to what we talked about. The first is that there are two, um, ordinances with municipal code amendments. The first is creating the new section that discusses portable toilets specifically, which is what you reviewed on Monday. The second wasn't in your packet Monday, it was very minor, but in order to make the code make sense, we had to do a small edit to AMC nine point oh four, um, where it refers to, um, portable toilets and privies and those sorts of things, so just to make the code make sense. The other thing that I'll, um, say is there was a question about the costs for restrooms, which is slightly off the topic, um, of portable toilets. Um, so I have some information on that, estimates, if you want me to discuss that now, I can. Okay.
Counsel, you okay with that?
I'd like to hear it.
Thank you.
So I talked with Rick Barnett, who is Parks Maintenance Manager. Um, Parks manages our current janitorial contracts, um, for the city and, um, the, the, cleaning of the Parks restrooms. And so his, we don't have, um, a firm estimate, but his, um, cost estimate based on their current cost to manage their parks and rec bathrooms for 365 days a year, public restroom is about $58,000 a year.
Is that all parks or just?
No, this would be for one restroom. $58,000, this is for the train station restroom was the context I gave him. How much do you think it'll cost to, um, operate and maintain that? So $58,000 a year, that includes, um, contract employees who would clean the restrooms once a day, and a security contract, uh, security person that would lock the restrooms at night, which you need a security person, because oftentimes there are difficult situations when you go to lock a public restroom at night. And it also includes the supplies and consumables that you would need for a bathroom. So that's about $58,000 a year is his estimate.
Excuse me, Director, what, what time will they be locking the toilet facility?
We haven't discussed any of that.
Okay.
What it doesn't include is repairs. Public restrooms are not treated kindly usually, so there would be repair costs on top of, on top of that, and that's really hard to estimate, because it just depends, it depends how, um, how well the restroom is engineered to withstand some abuse, which we have specified a prefab public restroom for the train station that is designed to be relatively, um, resistant to damage, but things still happen. And then, of course, it depends on what, what's actually done to the restroom, so things will get broken, we just don't know what. So, you know, $60,000 and up is what we expect for the train station restroom. The, there was discussion about city staff versus contract staff. We don't have city staff that do janitorial right now, we rely on contracts. The city is obligated to use Willamette Valley Rehab, um, as a qualified, um, it's QRF, I forget what it stands for, but a qual, qualified provider. I'm sure Counselor Smith knows what it is.
Qualified rehabilitation facility.
Right. As a public entity, we're required to use a QRF if one exists, and Willamette Valley Rehab exists and has the contract for janitorial in this building, for instance. So we don't go out to competitive bidding for janitorial services if there's a QRF that can do the work. We don't know right now if Willamette Valley Rehab would do the work at the train station, we haven't discussed that with them. If they don't, then we would put it out for public bid, and other janitorial companies could bid on that work, which might be lower, uh, in price. Will, Willamette Valley Rehab tends to have higher prices because they have, um, their mission is, um, you know, is special, right?
Right.
So I think that's it, I think that addressed the questions.
Counsel Olson?
I will have a comment after.
Counsel Novak?
How much does it cost to rent a porta potty?
I don't know.
Anybody know the cost of porta potties?
Uh, Director, Executive Director, um, Grother would know. Jack, look him up. She's a subject matter expert, so, at least I accept her as that.
Lisa Grado, Albany Downtown Association. Um, to rent them this year, if we had put them in at Movies at Montith, they would have been $100 per piece per night, but a long-term rental would be different.
Okay.
Do you have any idea how much it would cost per year?
No, I don't.
So what, I couldn't quite hear what you were saying. Yeah, you won't pull us out of here if you get.
When we went to rent them for Movies at Montith, they were going to cost $100 per night.
Per night?
Per unit. But that is for one that is a short-term rental for an event, because that's the type of event that we have in the park.
Okay.
So a long-term rental would be different, it would be servicing as opposed to the delivery and pickup. So there are numerous companies in town, I'm sure that could answer that.
So 100 times 365 would be 36500, wouldn't it? Thirty-six thousand?
I'm sure that that's not the way they would charge.
A little bit less. Okay.
Yeah, but.
Can I just go away now?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, could you probably, could you possibly get us a quote for a porta potty?
I can.
Thank you. Okay, um, is that to address both?
Counselor Novak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Novak, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'm still wondering what problem we're trying to solve with this ordinance. I know if it's just the problem of the fact that we don't have an ordinance on the books, you know, okay, but, uh, this all came about, from what I recall, because, um, the church wanted to renew the porta potty that they have on their property to help the homeless, and all but one council member thought that was a great idea. And so now we come back with an ordinance that has, uh, in just the closing, changes to the AMC as described would create greater costs associated with permit management and code compliance. These costs are difficult to quantify. That's just one thing that makes me take pause. Also, the fact that anyone wanting to have the use of a public toilet would have to provide a site plan, along with emptying and maintenance schedule and other information. Right now, uh, one of my neighbors, two of my neighbors actually, were having new roofs put on their houses, and one of them has a porta potty there for the workers. I don't know if that was part of the company that's putting the roof on, or whether my neighbors are paying for this porta potty. But I'm like, okay, so if I need to get a new roof on my house, I need to get permitted first before I can put a porta potty, if I need to do that. I just, I'm, there's a lot of things that I'm, I'm really questioning about, about this situation. I, I don't understand also why government should get between two contractual parties on private property. I, I, yeah.
Okay, I'll try to address that. So, you're right, the, this started, the discussion started with the First Christian Church wanted to renew their, uh, permission to have their porta potty. Our code does not allow the use of that porta potty. So at the March meeting, what I tried to present to the council was that I cannot give them permission to keep that porta potty there, because our municipal code does not allow it. I cannot allow something that the municipal code does not allow. So the council's direction was bring back revisions to the municipal code that would expand the allowed uses of porta potties in the city. So what we're doing essentially here with these municipal code amendments is opening the city up to increased use of porta potties. But we can't, it is my opinion, that it would be unwise to just say, anybody that wants a porta potty can have one, because we would be creating, um, situations where, um, the use of porta potties very likely would lead to nuisances for neighbors and the community as a whole. And the city has an obligation to protect the community from that. We have lots of code about public nuisances. People aren't allowed to keep debris on their property, which would attract, um, rodents and vectors. You know, there's, there's a lot, um, Chief Harden can go through a lot of them, I'm sure. So this code that we've, that I, we have written. So this code that we've, that I, we have written is an attempt to allow increased use of porta potties in the city, as the council requested, while keeping some guidance on them so that when they become a nuisance, well, to first try to limit the ability of them to become a nuisance by requiring that people come and tell us, if you want to have a porta potty for 90 days, you have to tell us where you're going to put it. And, and we have to approve that because it can't be in the right of way and it can't be where it's going to affect your neighbor. So we need some guidelines around that. And then if it is put someplace and it's not maintained or it's knocked over or otherwise becomes a continual nuisance, we have the authority to deal with that, just like we do with other nuisances. So that's the purpose of the code.
Thank you, and I do appreciate your explanation. Is it not possible that in order to address the situation of the church and the porta potty, that rather than getting sort of a government involvement between private parties, which has worked fairly well up forever, as far as I know, I could not, the council, just agree to waive a requirement for this church? Because they've helped a lot of homeless people find a place to use a restroom in the middle of the night. They've, they've not only cleaned it themselves, but the company that they get it from cleans it as well. It hasn't been a problem, in other words. It hasn't been a nuisance, it hasn't, so, you know, to me, it's like you're creating this really big solution when we, we could do this a lot more simply. And I, I just, I really take issue with the fact that what we're saying here now is in order for the church to keep the porta potty that's helping all these people who would otherwise not have as nice of a place to use a restroom in the middle of the night, if they're afraid to use the ones in the parks or whatever, rather than just by issue of the council, however that works, and agreeing together, because most of us were in favor of it anyway, doing it a simpler way without the necessitation of new language in the Albany Municipal Code.
I, I think that that would be great. I would love for the code to stay the way it is, personally. But I think that might be a question for the city attorney because my understanding is that I cannot authorize something that goes against the code. So I can't tell the church that they could keep that porta potty. I'm not sure if Sean has an opinion on that, if the council could do that.
City, city attorney?
I think what, no, you, we wouldn't be able to do that, number one. But the other thing is, is that we have to treat everybody the same. We have to treat all businesses the same, all churches the same. So if we make an exception for one and then say we're not going to make it for somebody else, then we basically are selectively enforcing the code we have in place. So we just need to be able to make sure whatever code we have, we can, we can, you know, enforce it uniformly and equally to everybody. And I think that was part of the concern with First Christian.
But if we don't have language on the books and we haven't passed this yet, then we aren't violating any code because there is no existing code addressing that. Why could we not, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be a pain in the butt, I'm just trying to.
I know.
No, the thing is, is that, and I understand what the city attorney is saying, is just if we allow this exception for them and no one else, then we'll liable, we'll be sued.
Why could we not take any other, I mean, what other, we don't have people lining up saying, I want to use a, I want to, you know, I want to be allowed to put a porta potty next to my building. I mean, outside of the business that's being done and has been done for years in this town and other towns regarding porta potty companies and their customers, you know, I just, I, I don't see why we need to have government involvement here because that just, it creates more work for staff. We have enough trouble with code compliance with things. We, we have a gentleman that you all know about that's been brought to your attention and spoke here a week or two ago, Mr. James, who, can I finish my sentence?
Go ahead and finish, but we're getting off topic.
I'm, no, sir, it's directly on topic, please hear me out.
I'm hearing you.
I promise you, no, I'm not, I'm not getting off topic. You're talking about code compliance and treating everyone equally. And my point to you is, you, if we do this ordinance and create more code and more things to enforce, and you already say right here in the language that changes to the AMC as described would create greater costs associated with permit management and code compliance. These costs are difficult to quantify. Staff time, the compliance officer that we have, who's, you know, I guess, worked into the ground and has a hard time. And the reason I mentioned Mr. James is because we have compliance issues that we're not even able to enforce the ones we have. If you put in this new language and you create an entire new category of, of porta potty, then, then it's going to be even, we're going to be stretched even more thin and we don't know how much it will cost. And I, I just, it doesn't make any sense to me as a solution.
Counselor Smith and Counselor Olson?
I think something that's been lost this evening is that, and it's been, it's been stated already, but let me refresh people's memory. The reason that we need the code change is that we don't have a code that allows the church to have a porta potty. It's not in there. We can't authorize something that's not legal under our code.
Could we not say then in our code, we, we make it legal for churches who want to help the homeless by providing a porta potty on their private property to do so? No strings attached?
That, that's the, the point of this change is to create something that can be permitted under the code for a church or for anybody with private property.
The, the direction that the council gave at the March meeting was not just for churches, but any entity that might want to use a portable toilet for a long term should have, there should be a mechanism to allow that. The current code does not allow that. There is no allowable use of a portable toilet for a long term for First Christian Church or anyone else.
And this is the mechanism to allow that?
So the, I, I do agree with you. It will create costs and that's why I wrote it in the memo. We'll, whoever comes in will have to process their permits. There'll be officer staff time to, when there are complaints. There are, is already officer staff time about complaints about portable toilets. The use of more portable toilets is likely to create more complaints and more staff time. So that is one of the potential impacts. But to Sean's point, we can't, as a city, we have to address the community as a whole. And you could say that, the council could have directed us to say, we want to allow religious organizations to have permission to use portable toilets to meet the needs. You could have directed me to do that and I could have written that. It still would have included some of this language because we're not going to let them put it anywhere. We still have to have some control. But that wasn't the direction I got. So the code that I tried to write was in response to the direction that I believe I got.
And, and, and to add to that, we can't just give religious organizations that, that permission. We have to make it, if we're going to make it legal for everyone, not just churches, everyone has the right to apply for a permit for this toilet.
My point, which I guess I am not making as clearly as I'd like, is that it was totally legal for anyone to call a porta potty company and have the porta potty company come and you're telling me no. So what, so then my neighbor has an illegal porta potty?
No, probably what happened with that, the code requires when you're doing construction activity that you provide a portable toilet for your construction workers. So that portable toilet is provided by the company for the construction activity that's happening and that is required by code. But the general use of a portable toilet by the general public is not allowed. It would be allowed with these code changes.
So when my pickleball, the Albany pickleball.
Well, Counselor Novak, he was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to jump out of turn, but I do.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm glad we're going to do this with our code because otherwise the church would be outside the code and would we classify those criminals because they're outside the code per it? But I don't think we want to have them coming back here every 90 days so we can have this delightful discussion every three months.
It wouldn't be with us.
And I think it's, huh, you wouldn't allow?
No, it wouldn't be with us, it would be with them.
It would be the city manager.
No, if we don't change the code, they'll have to come to the council.
I agree. So that's why we want to change the code, yeah.
Right, that's why I'm saying, I'm glad we're changing the code.
I agree with you.
Okay. So I, I think it's good to have it in the code. So we have a little bit of flexibility and you can argue with them about whether they've got the screening correctly and it's downwind, hopefully, so most of the time.
Okay.
Yeah. But I don't think we want a proliferation of porta potties all over the city where it might be handy, but it would be, I think, unfortunate.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. Such an interesting topic.
It really is.
Got a couple of questions, simple. Have we had any issue with people moving into buying a home, renting a home, and instead of hooking up to city services, put a porta potty out, out there?
No, it's not currently allowed. So they would be required under, community development would be enforcing the requirements for sewer hookups.
Okay.
Wow. Wow.
Then, now it's gone. Then also, Counselor Olson, I think, brought it up. So will the church have to come in every 30 days and get a $30 permit?
No. No, so maybe, it might not be clear in the ordinance language, but the intent is that the permit would be for 90 days and then they would need to request an extension for 90 days. So, and the reason that I set it up like that is because it gives us an opportunity to assess the portable toilet. Have there been complaints? Is it still being used? And have a discussion with them about, okay, how's it going? Where is it? Is it being serviced? All those things that might come up. But it wouldn't be, come in every 30 days and talk to the council. It would be a discussion with staff about renewing that permit.
30 days isn't very.
It's every 90, I think, right?
90 days, which is still not a long period of time. It's, it's the longest period of time for a portable toilet I was able to find in any ordinance anywhere.
Okay. And then my last comment is, this is, everything is a living document.
Right.
I say we go ahead and give it a try and maybe have staff come back and report in six months to see if there's any issue with it. I mean, I hate to say that, you know, you lay awake thinking about portable toilets, but you know, it's like, it's important and we want to do what's right, but we also don't want to overstep our boundaries as to, you know, what we have people do. So anyway, I'd say that I'm okay with just at least giving it a try and I appreciate your, I know it wasn't easy to write, but you know, you're probably dreaming about toilets too.
I hope not. Thank you, counsel, thank you, Director. Counsel, is there a, oh, you have more, go ahead.
Yes, sir, I have a question. So this permitting also necessitates the creation of a site plan. How much will someone be charged for the creation of a site plan with regard to the porta potty? And how long will that take?
The site plan can be as simple as a drawing on a piece of paper.
And the charge for that?
Simple, oh, no, you just draw it and you bring it to us and we review it. And then would review it with our maps that show any easements or setbacks or other restrictions on the property and then we would agree on the placement of the portable toilet.
Okay, so.
You don't have to pay anybody to draw a site plan for a simple, it's not like an engineering plan for a remodel or something. You can just take a pencil and draw it.
Okay, the only site plans I've ever heard of required an engineer to engineer them. And I, I just, thanks, it's good to know that that's.
Site plan might be too formal of a term. Just a sketch is all that's needed.
Can we maybe change the language to reflect that?
Well, it's, I think it's what's described in all of the other permit code and building permit code, but in actuality, you don't need stamped plans or something like.
But as a regular person looking at the, I'm, I'm just saying, if it, if it freaked me out, someone else is going to go, wow, no, I can't even think about doing this because I'd have to create a site plan and that costs money.
So I think we need to move this along.
Yeah, I'll just say, I was going to, wanted to put up a shed on my property. I called the county and asked them what is, what kind of site plan they require and they said a sketch, you know, that defines this and this and this.
I'm just saying, most people might not be aware of that. I wasn't aware of that.
Let's, they can just call us and we'd be happy to help them through that.
So counsel, what would you like to do with this?
Read the ordinance.
City Attorney, can you have read the ordinance in title only? A first reading in title only.
An ordinance admitting Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 7.84, Public Nuisances, by adding a new section titled 7.84.095, Portable Toilets.
Counsel?
Move to have the ordinance read a second time in title only?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
Most, can I roll a call, please?
Counselor Bartholomew?
Aye.
Counselor, oh, Kupczynski isn't here, sorry. Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Novak?
No.
Thank you.
A single no vote.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to do the second, you're going to talk about the second one?
Well, Mayor, it doesn't make sense to adopt the second one if the first one doesn't pass. Sean?
That, that is true, however, if we're going to, if we talk about tonight, you can get your first reading tonight and then have your second reading on the 10th, so.
Polite.
Can, City Attorney, can you read the, the amendment, amend Albany Municipal Code, Section 9.4.04.030, Portable Toilets? In title only?
An ordinance admitting Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 9.04, Maintenance of Property.
And no point in reading it a second time?
No point in reading it a second time?
No, I don't, I don't think there's any point because we have to pass the first.
Just to be legal, I would move that we have the ordinance read a second time in title only.
Second.
Oh, it has to be unanimous. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
Right, Mayor, I lost track of who made a motion, who seconded, and what we voted on.
All those in favor say, oh, excuse me.
Counselor Johnson made the motion and Counselor Smith seconded.
I didn't vote and I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Is there any point in passing this ordinance if the first ordinance isn't on the book?
I'm going to defer that to Director Bailey. I'm looking at the two titles. In this case, you might be able to pass this one and not pass the other one tonight, pass the other one on the 10th. I don't think that's going to be the, what's going to happen, but, but this isn't like when you're doing an annexation and then removing the property from the rural fire district and you, you, you know, wouldn't remove the property before it was annexed, that kind of thing. But Director Bailey can speak to that.
The only, the only thing I see is that in this ordinance, in this modification of the code, it refers to AMC Section 7.84.095, which is the one you just didn't vote for the second reading, so.
We just like to the 10th.
There is a reference that wouldn't make sense, but it can't go into effect for 30 days anyway. I don't know, Sean, you'll have to weigh in.
We can, can we just bring them back both of them?
We can, we can bring it back on the 10th for a second reading, however.
We also have a motion on the floor that we could try a vote on.
Yeah, we could.
Clean that up.
So we have a motion on the, we have a motion in the second on the floor. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Read it a second time.
Read it a second time, the second time in title only.
I'll say yes.
Yes, I'll say that. So we're, second time in title only.
Did we get a unanimous vote?
We had, we had a motion. I don't know, I was waiting for, because Dick Teddy didn't vote.
I believe I did that, but.
So can we have roll call in that second?
I don't, I don't think we voted yet.
No, we didn't vote.
Yeah.
So we had a motion in the second, Counselor Johnson motion, you seconded. All those in favor say aye, reading in title only?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Novak?
Yeah, I'm a little bit, forgive me, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. I'm not clear on the second part.
Page 25.
Thank you.
Page 25, I believe.
Director Bailey, could you sum that up with the second? Director Bailey, could you sum that up with the second part is doing, saying, just briefly in a line?
Sure. This ordinance is amending the municipal code to edit Section 9.04. It removes some language that is, would no longer be necessary if the new section were approved, and it adds a reference to that new section, for clarity.
So either the first one has to come back on the 10th.
Can there be a stampede of porta potties if we pass this tonight? I doubt it.
I think nothing would change, but I'm not sure.
So do we have to have it read? We voted?
Well, I'm still waiting for Counselor Novak.
Oh.
So reading this second part a second time changes some language, but I'm still not clear on, on what, how that impacts.
So we haven't passed the first part?
I understand that, yes.
Right. And so this is, this is, if we do pass the first part, so I believe we should wait until the 10th to bring them both back. But we had a motion and a second on the floor.
And that is in regard to passing the second part, this motion and second?
Reading it a second time.
Reading it a second time, correct.
But as you said, it makes more sense to bring them back together.
In my opinion.
And if you feel, if you feel that way, Counselor Novak, then if you vote no on the second reading, that's what will happen.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that clarification, so I will vote no on that.
Okay. So let's go ahead and vote, and then we'll bring it back on the 10th.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those say no?
No.
Okay, those opposed. Motion does not pass. We'll see it on the 10th. Next on the agenda is the, so the number, Item B, staff reports, was moved to the 10th as well, so we're not going to be talking about that tonight. But I tell you, since we mentioned that we needed more information, my email box is a little blown up with emails from all over the United States, just saying, and I'm sure yours has as well. Item six on the count is business from the council.
Can you, can you kind of share a little bit which way?
It's, it's a split.
It's a split.
It's a split, yeah.
Okay.
And so one-third is saying, don't bring it in, others saying, put a moratorium, some are saying, just go ahead and let it in, so. Just a lot of reading, so. I'm sure when you do get that information, forward it to the city clerk, and then she'll get it to us as a group, so we all have the same information. Business from the council, I started on this side this time. I'm going to start with Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I saved this on purpose for this evening. I'm sure most of us are familiar with Mr. Bill Tally, as he sometimes writes to us, and he is a cleaner-upper in this town. He takes miles-long walks, picking up litter and garbage, and he gave a suggestion that I think is relatively brilliant, so I'd like to bring it to your attention. He said, what if we encouraged families to spend five minutes a week caring for the block on which you live? And, you know, have a little Make and Keep Albany Beautiful campaign. Take pride in your neighborhood, take pride in your town. And he suggested also possibly instituting awards, annual awards, the neighborhood with the least debris, the most improved neighborhood, individual awards, like most involved, excluding himself, he says. And maybe we could give as rewards for these things, vouchers to concerts in the park or carousel tickets, and I thought that was just a super good idea. And I, I genuinely appreciate this gentleman and how he works so hard on a daily basis to make Albany beautiful. I think these are super brilliant ideas, and I would love to see us do this.
Actually, I'm glad you mentioned that. There's actually a group of people that Peter and I met with that are actually working on that right now, putting something together. So they, I saw one of them the other day, and they said they're almost there, but they'll get back to me. So they'll be coming to us at some point.
Excellent. Hallelujah.
I like the, I like the awards idea, though.
Perhaps, Mr. Mayor, we could link Mr. Tally with Krista Before.
I agree.
One of those two.
She just had a, I think she just had a grandbaby too, so she's probably not going to talk to us right now. But I will make sure that connection happens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's go, Counselor Bartholomew. I got you.
Nothing.
Counselor Olson?
Yes, did we decide that we want ordinance back on this psilocybin stuff?
We're moving to the 10th. We moved it out to the 10th. Or the 8th.
Still didn't understand.
We moved it to the 10th.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we moved it to the 8th.
The 8th, the work session on the 8th.
For a first reading, and then the 10th for a potential second reading.
Right. Give us more time to collect information.
Yeah, well, I'm going to say I don't see any point in having another ordinance on psilocybin. The public has already decided in our area that they ought to go ahead with psilocybin.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
May I comment? So what you've decided to do is to ask us to bring it back, to refer it to the ballot, the November 8 ballot, to let the citizens vote. It's important to remember that Measure 109 was passed at the same time that Measure 110 was passed, and Measure 110 is considered by many to be a failure. I thought, I don't think it's, that was, I don't know how many years ago, three or four years ago, so it's not certain that 109 enjoys the same support today that it, that enjoyed back when it was voted on by the general public. And I just offer that because you, what you're proposing to do is to put this two-year moratorium in front of the voters for them to express their intent, updated intent now.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything else.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, as you said, you had received a lot of emails, and some of the counselors have likewise probably done the same thing. This is not a land use decision or a quasi judicial decision, but a legislative one, so any information you get, you can share, but you, you don't have to send everything to the city clerk. You're, you're able to do your own independent research if you want, and you don't have to, you know, read, read everything in the, in the meeting that we have on the 8th or the 10th either. It's a legislative hearing, so it's, it's a little different than what we would be doing in the quasi judicial, so.
Thanks for that.
Well, I, I read an article, I think it was in the Democrat Herald, online, and it looks to me like the regulations are pretty darn tight, that, I, I don't, the ordinary guy can't just go out and buy psilocybin on the street like he can a bunch of other illegal drugs. And in fact, I don't think the private guy can buy it at all. I think it has to be...
Prescribed.
Prescribed by a practitioner, and essentially given to you through the practitioner and whoever hands it. I don't know if it's a drugstore or what, but it seems to me regulations are super tight, and it seems like we're spending a lot of time that I wouldn't have to be spent. But that's our business here, is to spend time, so.
Okay, we'll talk, we'll talk, thanks, Counselor Olson, we'll talk about it again on the 8th, and then hopefully do something with it then.
Okay.
Counselor Smith?
Two things. A reminder that Saturday is the dedication of Station 15 in Millersburg, our newest fire station that's at 2 o'clock. I plan to attend. And another thing is that I got email yesterday or the day before from Parks and Recreation since I had indicated my willingness to volunteer at the Art and Air Festival to do something. Lots of opportunities for volunteering out there, and I would encourage people who contact Parks and Rec and, and get the same information. You can sign up online, it takes a second. And so it's coming up at the end of August, and contact Parks and Rec, they could, and you can also share that with your appointees to boards and commissions as another way for them to be involved. Thanks.
Excellent. All I have is a couple of things. Art and Air Festival volunteering, I won't be doing that, just saying. But there's a carnival on the 20th at the Carousel, we're looking for volunteers for that as well. Matter of fact, a lot of nonprofits are looking for volunteers, and so if you feel like volunteering, please reach out to a local organization and volunteer your time, and it helps the community, goodwill, that kind of thing. I did have the pleasure of presenting at Uplift Leadership Today at Willamette University. It's a nonprofit organization that teaches young high school students that are getting ready to graduate interviewing skills. We do mock interviews, we do presentations on team building, we do presentations on actually how to put together a resume. We go over their resumes, but it was a great opportunity to be a part of that, and I'm going to ask them to speak with our school system, because Salem schools are doing it, and their kids are great. It gives you an opportunity to mentor a young person, so if we can bring something like that to Albany, I'm going to hopefully talk to Andy Gardner about it, and also Lisa Avery at LBCC. And other than that, that's it for us. And also be careful out there in the heat. I wore a suit and tie today and regretted it, but please be careful out there and make sure you hydrate. And I'll now turn it over to the city manager, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Johnson?
I was feeling left out.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I really don't have anything tonight. I mean, I, I had, it seems like the heat brings out anger in people, and I had a couple calls on, well, one of them was, why aren't we watering one park and doing others? And then another on our raise on garbage fees, and, you know, I directed the garbage fee one, you know, to the website so that there's assistance out there if people, you know, need it, or if they could like share with a neighbor their bins or anything and stuff, but I think he just called to complain. No matter what I said, it wasn't going to work, you know, so. I noticed that the county actually reluctantly is raising their garbage rates too, and so it's not like we're the only ones doing it. I mean, I really hate for all the people that are suffering right now, but you just don't know what to tell them anymore, so.
Yeah.
If anybody has any good ideas. And then also Kinsey wrote me and said, Counselor Johnson, have you gotten any ideas on your appointee for the landmarks? I says, Kinsey? No. So if anybody has any ideas for landmarks, I asked her to send it out, and she said she already had, you know, weeks ago, so if anybody knows anybody who wants to be on landmarks, let me know.
Who left the landmarks?
I have no idea, it's been so long. I really don't.
I usually see that, it's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's an appointment that needed to be done, whether it expired their term, or if they had to leave, or whatever, I really don't remember. So if you have an idea, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to city manager to report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, and it goes back to the psilocybin issue, that even, I wanted to point out further to what Counselor Olson was saying, that if, even if the council elects not to refer a two-year moratorium or a ban to the voters, you, you are still allowed, as Sean pointed out the last time we met, to adopt reasonable regulations on hours, location, and operation of licenses. And, you know, that point and others can be found on the League of Oregon City's site on this, and I, I hope you've had a chance to look at it, but if not, in case you haven't, I'll send it out to you again this Friday. It's a, it's a good page to give you a good idea of the options that are available to you, and also the tight regulation that Counselor Olson talked about that OHA is, is coming up with. So I, I'd encourage you to take a look at that before the next time we meet.
Thank you. The county, city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing employment-related, related performance of the chief executive officer in accordance with ORS 192.660, subsection 2, subsection I. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience will now be moved into the waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, the staff will then open the doors, and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive sessions. I now recess to executive session at 7:02 PM, 27 July 2022. I now recess to executive session at 7:02 PM, 27 July, 2022.
Anybody coming in? Ready for Sean?
Matt.
Council, we have, do we have a motion?
I would move that we give the city manager a one and a half percent increase on his compensation, deferred comp.
Deferred comp?
Mm-hmm, for his annual increase.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much Holly, Director Roten for coming in today. How's your family doing?
Excellent, enjoying the summer.
That's good. Okay, next on our agenda is where we've convened. I will say happily the next meeting is my grandson's sixth birthday, August 8th at 4:00 p.m. for our work session.